Hello everyone, thank you for tuning in. I am Pastor Chris Lokie, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, and I've been beginning a new study called The Study of the Flood Account on Genesis 6 through 9. I know some of you were able to participate with me live, but I wasn't able to record it at the time. So anyway, I am recording this study for you to view that would you like? And so we'll go ahead and begin. So if you follow along with my slides, you're welcome to look along as you listen. So one might ask, why study the account of the flood? You know, it happened so long ago. How is it relevant to my life today? Well, it's a valid question. However, it can help answer questions related to the age of the earth, global climates, geology, geography, and the like. Of course, sealing the consequence and seriousness of sin. As a flood shows God's serious view of sin as a point, as it also points to Christ coming again. Of course, it can say something about our relationship to the animals and creation today. Also, what about the question of dinosaurs? How do we, how do we address that as Christians in their existence with man? So I think all important things that we can glean from this section of scripture. So let's go ahead and read it together, or I'll read it, you can listen, from Genesis 6, 1 through 4. Genesis 6, 1 through 4. Says, "When man began to multiply in the face of the land, and daughters were born to them, the sons of God saw that the daughters of man were attractive, and they took as their wives any they chose. And the Lord said, My Spirit shall not abide in man forever, for his flesh, his days shall be 120 years. The Nephilim were on the earth in those days, and also afterward, when the sons of God came into the daughters of man, and they bore children to them, these were the mighty men who are of old, the men of renown." So we're going to unpack those verses today. So God had told Adam and Eve, of course, to be fruitful and multiply. They were faithful to that command. We know of three of their children for sure, Cain, Abel, Seth. Now, of course, we also know that they must have had other offspring as well, because Cain was worried about finding people, people finding him and killing him in Genesis 4:14. Which people has to be other offspring of Adam and Eve. You know, I think sometimes there can be that assumption if you're, if you're, you know, kind of maybe reading for the Bible for the first time and following the narrative of Genesis that Cain and Abel were the first two children of Adam and Eve. However, they, they could not have been because of Cain's reference in Genesis 4:14 of worried about these people finding him and killing him. And so they were two of the offspring of Adam and Eve, but they were not the first ones. Also, it mentions that Cain knew his wife in Genesis 4:17. So Adam and Eve must have also had girls unnamed in scripture that were alive during that time. Remember, Adam lived 930 years, so if he lived to a similar age, it would have been given them, it would have given them plenty of years to begin to populate the earth. Genesis 6:1 speaks to this fact. They began to multiply or become many on the face of the land. It says, this included daughters born to man. Notice prior to this, it just focused on their male offspring. Now daughters are mentioned because you have the lineage, the genealogy of Adam found in Genesis, chapter 5, going, you know, from him all the way to Noah, but you don't know, now the daughters of Adam are mentioned, but here it's, it's mentioned that there's these daughters of men. And that's what brings us to verse 2, where it says, "The sons of God saw that the daughters of man were attractive, and they took as their wives any they chose." Now, this verse is a bit of a mystery. Who are these sons of God? As I've stated, there are three main interpretations of this. Kind of the, the older view, which we'll get to, was held by quite a few people throughout the history of the church, was that this sons of God is a reference to angels or demons, non-human, godlike beings. Another interpretation might be sons of kind of superior men, like kings or rulers, or three sons of godly men, such as the descendants of Seth, which is how we view it as from our Lutheran perspective. And we'll get into why here in a second. So that first view, angels or demons, why would some people read into that reference to sons of God as being angels? Well, some speculate angels because the use of sons of God in other places, the Old Testament, as a reference to angels. Then Job 1:6, Job 2:1, 38:7, Psalm 29:1, Psalm 89, 6 and 7. This is the oldest held view, found in Jewish exegesis, like Philo and Josephus, and many early Christian writers such as Justin Martyr, Arineus, Clement, Tertullian, Origen. I guess had that, had that view as well. Also, they say this reference distinguishes them from the daughters of man, making them non-human. In other words, their argument is, you know, if they were the sort of referring to the sons of Seth or kind of the descendants of Seth, or to kings or rulers, why would they be referenced in this way as sons of God? Kind of in contrast to the daughters of man, right? Whoever believed this would defy the nature and creation of angels, who are a separate creation from man. Jesus says in Matthew 22:30, "That in the resurrection we will neither marry nor be given in marriage, like the angels in heaven." So in other words, if, how we understand that reference of Jesus is that angels neither marry nor given in marriage, kind of referring to either husbands or wives, right? And so we'll be like the angels. We will not be angels in heaven. That's very clear in scripture. They are a separate creation of God, separate from us as those made in God's image and His likeness. So we do not become angels when we die, to be very clear. But we will be like the angels in that respect in the resurrection, in that our focus will be on worshiping the Lord, basking in His glory, the joy and the peace of heaven are, you know, what will our relationships be like? There will they be the same? At least what it's saying is, you know, in heaven, new heaven, new earth, there's not going to be the continual bringing together of the union of a man and a woman. So anyway, the point of that is, is that that's Jesus' reference. So it would seem odd if, when Moses is writing this to refer to these sons of God as angels, because how would that, how would that work as far as angels coming down and then uniting themselves with, with the daughters of man? You know, the only really explanation in my mind where that could happen would be fallen angels at best, demons possessing, possessing man. That could be the only way this reference would fit, because the Lord would not perfect such unions according to His will. The second interpretation is the royal interpretation, which is introduced in Jewish exegesis about the middle of the second century AD. Partly, it seems out of conviction that angels could not indulge in sexual intercourse, and partly to suppress speculation about them. Right? Those that, that were uncomfortable with that line of exegesis, you know, the study of the word and the interpretation of word. So in other words, you know, they didn't, they didn't feel comfortable with that explanation that sons of God could be angels. And so they viewed it more as these sons of God could be a reference to like kings or rulers. It became the most usual rabidic view. This is partly because there are references to kings as sons of God, like in Psalm 82, 2 Samuel 7:14. You can kind of read into that of, you know, referring to son of Solomon, Psalm 2, or son of David Solomon, Psalm 2:7, where it's, you know, a clear reference to the king and where it's, where it says in Psalm 2:7. "I will tell the decree the Lord said to me, You are my son. Today I have begotten you." Which, in the reference of it, it's talking about the king, king of Israel, okay? But, you know, ultimately, we believe it's fulfilled in Christ as the son of God who is begotten from the Father, Jesus, right? But anyway, because of that kind of reference of, like later on, it says, "Kiss the son lest he be angry, and you perish in, in the way, for his wrath is quickly kindled. Blessed are those who take refuge in him." So it's a, it's a reference to the king. So that's why some people read into it that way. And this is from one of the commentaries that I, that I read on Genesis. Said, "On this interpretation, the kings were guilty of abuse by marrying whoever they chose, i.e. compelling women to join their polygamist harems. It is urged that only interpretation which identified sons of God with men as opposed to angels can explain why men are judged for the intermarriages that occur." In other words, once again, it would seem odd, right, if, if really the angels, if these fallen angels are to blame for these unions of kind of, you know, it's saying as they took as their wives any they chose, right? If they're essentially taking by force the daughters of men and having union with them. If, if that interpretation would be correct, which we don't believe as far as angels doing this, or angels inhabiting possessing man to do this, right? Why then does God hold man accountable in the rest of the narrative of Genesis 6 for, for this sin and these, and these unions? If it's really the, the angels that are to blame, right? And so that's, that's kind of the logic behind what he's saying in that, in that quote from the commentary, okay? However, from our point of view, this does seem pretty specific for this part of the narrative. It would seem that if Moses met rulers or leaders, he would have mentioned that more clearly, you'd think, instead of this reference to sons of God, that he would have made that more clear. And this is why our preferred view as far as our Lutheran theologians today, at least from our Missouri Senate perspective, is that this is perhaps a reference to the Sethites, okay? Those in the line of Seth mentioned, you know, as one of the descendants of Abraham in Genesis 5. Is because it would fit the context to some degree. The Sethites, the descendants of Seth, were just mentioned in chapter 5 and seemed to be implied as godly men in the world. There is the reference in Genesis 4:26, after the mention of birth of Seth and later son Enoch, that says, "At that time, people began to call upon the name of the Lord." Which, you know, is this very interesting reference, as if to say that perhaps there was a period of time where they really weren't formally worshiping the Lord as God. But during that time, they began to call upon the Lord in that way, okay? So the, so the descendants of, through Adam, through the line of Seth, his son, by that reference would seem to imply ones who were the most, most faithful to the Lord in the world, worshipped him. I mean, Enoch is one of them that talks about him walked with God and then just was not, you know, that we believe that he never died, but the Lord just took him because of his faith in him. So anyway, getting back to my slide, to explain then, being, them being referenced to his sons of God rather than sons of man, they perhaps reflected more the original image God had for man over against the other offspring of Adam and Eve, such as the reference in Enoch 5, to Enoch in chapter 5, 22 through 24, walking with God, as I said, right? So it's maybe a way of Moses, inspired by the Holy Spirit, to refer to the, to the Sethites over against kind of the daughters of man and which we believe could be an allusion to Cain's offspring. So in other words, on my slide, however, like Adam and Eve before them, they became tempted by the attraction of the daughters of man. Perhaps allusion to Cain's offspring and took them as wives against better judgment, and it corrupted them. This was Luther's view, so Martin Luther. He says, "The true meaning of the passage is that Moses designates as sons of God those people who had the promise of the blessed seed. It is a term of the New Testament and designates the believers who call God father, and whom God in turn calls sons. The flood came, not because the Canite race had become corrupt, but because the race of the righteous who had believed God obeyed His word and observed true worship, and fallen into idolatry, disobedience of parents, sensual pleasures, and the practice of oppression." So in other words, if I'm reading that right, Luther's quote here, he's essentially saying, why did the flood happen? It was not because of a curse upon Cain. You know, you see that evil, the first murder in the world, the results of sin and all of that stuff, but that seeing the proliferation of, of that in the world. And so the descendants, at least from, from this perspective, the descendants of Cain influenced, tempted the descendants of Seth. And so those that were more the sons of God, the faithful that were worshiping over against some of the other offspring, descendants of Adam and Eve, that they became tempted and, and had union with them, and through that union, it, it led them away from the Lord. To the point, whereas we go along in the narrative, I mean, it says the thoughts of the people were, you know, men were only evil all the time. So that's how bad things had got. Yeah, because the, it actually says in verse 2, "And the sons of God saw that the daughters of man were attractive," or literally saw as good, the daughters of man. The reference to saw as good could be an allusion to Eve seeing the fruit of the tree as good in Genesis 3:6. Therefore, the line of Seth were corrupt, enticed into greater sin by their attraction, unions with the daughters of man, Cain's offspring. They took or seized them as wives, as wives, it says. By the language, these were not viewed as holy God-pleasing types of unions, is how we're kind of to read into the text. So then verse 3. Says, "Then the Lord said, My spirit shall not abide in man forever, for his flesh, his days shall be 120 years." And I've always been fascinated with this, with this reference, okay? So I always like to teach on it as well. So it says, "Then the Lord said, My spirit shall abide in man forever." That word spirit is the Hebrew word ruach. Same word is in Genesis 1:2, where it talks about the spirit of God hovering over the waters. So it's this active presence of God that gives life, okay? And I know one of the questions when I did this live was, is it, is it talking about our spirit? Or is it talking about the spirit of the Lord? Well, the way it reads is, the Lord said, "My spirit shall not abide," okay? He's the one who gave us life, breathed into us our life, or spirit or soul, okay? And in, in that respect, it's really ultimately life comes from the Lord, obviously, through His spirit. But he's saying, you know, as, as He gave us life, and remember, prior to the flood, to this point, they were living 900 and some years. I mean, Mithuzla, as I said, in my slide, there was 969 years when he died. So they're living a long time. So what happened? Because they're living so long, that influence of sin, the temptation of sin, Satan's work in the world could be, I'm going to try that word again, proliferated that much more as, as time went on. Okay, so it's the Lord saying, okay, my spirit that gives life, that lives in man, I am going to limit their age. Because you know, because they're, they're, they're living too long, and this is what's happened as a result, okay? As he says, "Shall not abide," another translation, "shall not contend with or strive with." Only time it occurs, this particular Hebrew word in the Old Testament. So as I was saying, prior to this, people were living 700, 900 years or more. Mithuzla was 969 when he died. Lord had said people would die, but he was letting them live too long, given their increasing corruption and its influence in the world. They were living by His life-giving spirit living in them, but God was losing patience with the corruption of their nature. Man, after all, is flesh. God has the right to decide our limits as flesh of the man, now manifested after our own image, rather than His original image of righteousness and holiness, right? And that's why he makes, you know, "My flesh shall not abide in man forever, for he is flesh." You know, he is the one who's, who created us, who gave us life, and it is His prerogative, you know, part of His sovereignty to be able to decide, you know, how long we get to live, and that His life endures within us. So therefore, we believe this, the Lord limiting our years on earth to 120 years. Some see this interpretation as problematic, because we have people living beyond 120 after the flood. You have Abraham, who lived 175 years, Isaac 180, Jacob 147. However, if you go along in the biblical narrative, as it continues, the lifespan decreased to no longer living beyond 120 years. Joseph 110, Moses 120, Joshua 110, only Aaron exceeds 120, 123, as the narrative of the Bible goes on. So in other words, you know, God put these limits on man, and yeah, some of his early, some of the early patriarchs, he allowed to live longer. But in, in time, you know, the, the peak of what man could live to, as he set the boundary for, it would be 120. And interestingly, according to Wikipedia, the oldest person, when they died in recent recorded history, from what I was reading, was this Jeanne Calmet, if I say that right, from France, who died in 1997, supposedly 122. The next oldest recorded in recent history died at 119. The oldest known person today is evidently Cain Tanaka, a woman living in Japan, who was 118. The oldest verified man, when he dies, a man from Japan, was 116. Interestingly, just on June 30th of this year, 2021, the Guinness World Record recognized a man from Puerto Rico as the oldest living man in the world at 112. He is almost 113. Now, some commentators also see this 120 number as perhaps representing a 120-year period of grace before the flood would come. If this was the case, it would give Noah 120 years to build the ark before the flood came. This would make Noah 480 at the time, you know, if, if that's what this means. In other words, you know, we say, you know, his days should be 120 years. In other words, it's saying that, okay, I have decided because of the wickedness of man on this earth and how it's, how it's going in my world, that I am giving them this, this period of time before the flood comes of 120 years. You're sort of warning them ahead of time. So, you know, it's, it's good. Could that be part of what's being referenced here? We believe it could be. But once again, with a lot of these things, it can be open to interpretation and speculation. And then verse 4. So it says, "The Nephilim were on the earth in those days, and also afterward, when the sons of God came into the daughters of man, and they bore children to them, they were the mighty men who are of old, the men of renown." So who are these Nephilim or Nephilim, however you want to pronounce it? They are only mentioned three times in the Old Testament here, and in Numbers 13:33, which references these very large people who are living in the land of Canaan, when the spies checked out the promised land. They are called the sons of Anak. They're described like giants. You know, that, that the spies come back and says, "We are like grasshoppers in their eyes." You know, that, that they were so large, we seemed so small compared to them, okay? You know, perhaps Goliath was from this line of people, was over nine feet tall, of course, David and Goliath. Some see them as the offspring of these divine human relationships, described in verse 2. If that's how you read it, of course, we don't read it that way. But that's why they were, they were so large, perhaps. Ultimately, they really are a mystery. Interestingly, this word is also found in Exodus 21:22, seeming to mean miscarriages. You know, could these be a sad byproduct of the sin in man causing defense, leading to very large humans? It's kind of a good question. Like, I mean, we know that some of the largest people in the world have had, you know, very large pituitary glands where they have giantism, they call it, right? With it, and it made them grow very quickly and so on. Could it be a result of, you know, genetic problems that came after the fall and so on? I mean, it really is a, a good question. But anyway, it says, "You're on the earth in those days," and, and also, you know, afterward, at least, you know, in the way that they're described, it's almost like describing very large people. All right? So the text seems to imply these Nephilim or definitely were around in the days of these unions between the sons of God and the daughters of man, and, or were the result of this union. The Lutheran Study Bible associates these with sort of like tyrants or thugs. Regardless, these offspring were viewed as mighty men or warriors, it seems, in the way that reads, these were the mighty men who are bold, men of renown. Okay? These offspring were viewed as mighty men, warriors, you know, reference to that word, the Hebrew word in Genesis 10, Ezekiel 32. They were manly men or champions, kind of men of war. That word men of renown, okay? Which is the term used for Goliath in 1 Samuel 17:51, men of war, and 2 Samuel 14. So that's sorry about those, those mighty men who are bold. You know, that, you know, there were, there was conflict in the, in the ancient world, just like there is now. But, you know, just like in any time, there were those that rose up, took advantage. You know, these men of renown, they were known, they had fame, kind of men of, of name. So Lutheran Study Bible text note says, "First nobility of the world was a group of tyrants who were admired, nonetheless, they were sent as ripe for judgment in God's eyes." Our older Concordia Study Bible, which, you know, we had, have as one of our study bibles, is the Lutheran Church. Says, "The Hebrew word means fallen ones, meaning for, for Nephilim. In men's eyes, they were the heroes of old. Men of renown, in God's eyes, they were sinners, fallen ones, ripe for judgment." And so that actually brings us to this slide, which I did in person, well, through, through Zoom, second session, which starts with this slide here. And so I'm not going to continue on with that, because if you'd like, you can just view the second session, which is also on our Prince of Peace Lutheran YouTube page. So, so that is it. I'm glad that maybe some of you viewed this. I hope you learned a few things there about that account of Genesis 6. You know, if you might have any questions about anything that I taught or insight on it, or maybe things that, that you, you know, where maybe it might be helpful for me to, to know that as well. You're welcome to email me. My email is p s t r l o c k i e at gmail.com. So anyway, would love to hear from you if you happen to watch this, and if you appreciated this time of study of those first few four verses of Genesis, chapter 6. So if it, that's all right, you'd want to join me in a, in a closing prayer. Gracious Lord Jesus, we know that long ago, you've always been one with your Father from all time eternity, and that long ago, you, you created man to be perfect on this earth, made in your image and likeness. And yet we know from the, from the- And yet we know from the, from the narrative of scripture that your first creation, Adam and Eve, fell into sin as they, as they were tempted by your enemy Satan, the devil, and were led to eat from that tree, which you told them not to eat from. And we see throughout the rest of, of Genesis, how that influenced your good world and the wickedness of man, and how it became corrupted and full of violence, and we pray that as we go through these days, in which we can still see that in our world today, we pray, Lord, you'll continue to guide us and lead us by your Holy Spirit as your people. And that for anyone who viewed this scripture today and, and, and study that, I pray that it was beneficial for them, and that, Lord, you used it to grow them in their knowledge of preparing them for the narrative of the flood and why it came, and giving us insight as to that part of the, at that time in, in history, and how you had determined, because of the wickedness of man, to limit our time on this earth and to send the flood. And I pray that for anybody who's watching this, that they will continue on in this study and their continued pursuit of your truth through the world. So I ask your blessing upon anyone who's joined me today, in your name, dear Jesus, amen. So thanks again for jumping on, and we will we're